Okay, so tonight we have two candidates for Kelso's school board position three. We have over on the left Howard Sharple and on the right Alan Warner. And they each will have two minute opening statement, starting with Mr. Sharple.
My name is Howard Sharple, I'm glad to be here tonight. I'm married, have three grown children. I was born in Tucson, Arizona, grew up in California, and we moved here about 24 years ago. I just retired a couple of years ago from teaching in Kelso School District. I was a teacher for 25 years. Before that, I was a locomotive engineer for Southern Pacific Railroad Company. And I think that career change was probably the best thing that I ever did. I told people very often that teaching was the hardest job I ever had and the only one I ever loved. Right now, I'm serving out an expired term. We had a resignation on the Kelso School Board and I interviewed for the job and was awarded that job last January. And it's been a wonderful experience and I hope to continue to serve Kelso School District.
Mr. Warner?
Yes, my name is Alan Warner. I'm originally from Washougal, Washington, not too far from here where I grew up. I came here when I got married and I started working for the Longview School District. I worked with Spanish speaking population there as a liaison and did quite a variety of activities there. And was exposed to a lot of different facets of the education system. And when I did with administrators and teachers and different staff at different levels, PTOs and so forth. I finally decided that it was time to stop talking about what should be different in the education system and do something about it. And so I decided to take this chance to run the school board. And I have ideas, hopefully some of them are good.
Okay, thank you. The first question, and which of you here has the experience to answer the question? What are the school related issues that concern you and what would be your approach in starting with this topic?
School related issues? Could you be a little more specific? Are you talking about economic issues or are you talking about curriculum issues?
Whatever, whatever one of the ones you're thinking about.
Well, right now, the Kelso School Board is getting ready to try to pass a bond next year. Facilities improvement team has been working on the plan for months now. And they've finally come down to a decision about how much they're going to ask. Many of our buildings are really showing their age. So there are not only structural issues involved, but sometimes we're talking about security issues. So it's important that we get the bond passed next year.
Mr. Warner?
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to say that I am proud to have my kids in this district, I'm proud to go there. I'm very pleased that this is a good school district. I'm happy with, in general, not running because it's a fully run district, just as my duty is to do it. I don't think so. And it's a concern, of course, facilities is an important concern. And other concerns that districts have already addressed. I would like to see further involvement from the teachers, the design process of planning and for the roundup. I think we ignore their opinions too often. As a group, they're the ones who are doing the work, who are seeing the problems. But it seems like the more power people have over the process, the more distant they are from the classroom. And I think that's a real problem. I think we ought to be listening to what teachers have to say as we plan things. I also think we should pay more attention to what parents and have to say about schools. I would like to see more parent involvement in the planning and process. I also, it's not something we can change here at a district level, but I think we should start talking and maybe collaborating with other districts on how to change the reform system, the reform to reform, basically. We've been trying to reform education for some years now. And I don't think it has gotten us anywhere. And I think it's just led to frustration and problems, created more problems than solved. The SBA, for example, is, I think, is a poor way of measuring student performance. It's a one year, one test a year, and basically all it tells you is whether students are above the low average, historical average. And I think there are better ways of measuring teacher success. I think we ought to look for those. The public has demanded that teachers in schools be held accountable for their school outcomes. Sorry, I'm not looking over there.
Okay. So for the next question, Mr. Warner will go first. What experience dealing with big budgets and policy planning would you bring to the school board?
My only experience I have with big budgets is seeing them done. I've been avid reader of the news and following politics for a very long time. Policy planning, I've been able to see a lot of that done. I can say I find that when I make comments, they're often well received. So I have confidence in those.
Can you share your experience?
Well, any experience I've had with big budgets is what I've obtained just since I've been on the board since January. It's been an awakening. I've never had to look at so many numbers and try to make sense out of them. It's given me a whole new respect for our business manager. He's quite a talent. The second question, the second part of the question was like?
Policy planning.
Policy tends to come from the state. They hand down, you know, what's going to be required and we have to figure out how to make that work in the district.
Okay, the next question will be back to Mr. Sharple, he did it. How do you believe that schools should support students with mental health issues?
Mental health issues. We have a fairly extensive staff that dedicated to dealing with students with special needs. From, you know, the most basic as far as counseling to dealing with students who are, we have a student who is essentially taken care of by two aides and a teacher. And that's one of the problems with funding a special education, that the federal government and the state only give us a certain amount of money and we end up, as a district, have to spend quite a bit more in order to meet the needs of these students.
Any questions, Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I think that that's a very good question. It's a big deal. In general, we look at kids' performance and we see what they can do. I think it's a bad idea to, I mean, I don't think you can accurately measure how much a person can lift unless you can also measure how much weight they're carrying on their back. And some of our students are carrying quite a bit of weight on their backs. We have one of the highest incarceration rates in the state in this county. We have a high rate of mental illness in this county. We have a high rate of drug use in this county. So we have a number of students, probably a higher percentage just on a county level than most other counties in the state. And so a lot of those are related to mental health issues. I think, though, as Howard mentioned, budget is a huge problem here. We're all, I think, schools do what they can. The only way we're going to get more, but more, the only way we can address it better, I think we need to get a handle on the problem first. We need to get better at identifying the problems early. We need to be able to see the effects of trauma in our kids and the problems they're dealing with. And we need to be able to say, look, this is what's going on. This is how many of our kids are struggling with these issues. And this is how it's affecting their education. This is how it affects our community. And so once, if we can show that this is a big problem, then we can start getting support to do something about it.
Okay, the next question with Mr. Warner. Do you support exposing trade systems in high school and is it still worthy of trying to achieve this goal?
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. That is actually a big deal. I've noticed the district is already moving on this topic, I believe. They're working on getting some, I admire the German approach to education, maybe that's, I actually know someone who is from Germany and did an apprenticeship in high school. And because in Germany, the last two years of school can either be college preparation or an apprenticeship, and that works a lot better for their students. They get work experience. Because by the time you're a junior, you have a good idea whether you're going to college or not. And so if we could do that here, we could get kids in the workplace in their junior year, start working, start them getting work experience, getting, then they would be a lot more prepared for next step and they'd be more likely to stay in school. And we have kids, they know they're, that they're not going to be using algebra well in their life. Although algebra does teach logic and is very useful. But they're taking classes that are college prep classes and they're aware of that. They don't, aren't motivated to finish them, aren't motivated to study. And but if we could put them in a work program, then we could. Of course, as Howard mentioned, the state policy, state sets a lot of our rules, we can only go so far. But I think we should work towards that as far as we can. And in general, we should collaborate with other districts and try to encourage legislators to adjust the system when necessary.
Mr. Sharple, do you have anything?
We've already got at Kelso High School, a fairly extensive CTE program. In fact, we had our teacher building, with our kids, building portable classrooms to be used in the district. And currently, the superintendent is working on setting up an apprenticeship program with businesses in the community. Apprenticeships are a terrific way for kids to, you know, move into the workplace and learn the skills that they need to have in order to be a success in life.
Okay, the next question will start with Mr. Sharple. What safety measures would you include in facilities planning?
Well, security measures, first of all, the outside perimeter must have some kind of integrity. When Kelso High School went through its remodel, it limited the number of access points to the school. So that, right now, I mean, people should only be able to get into the building through the main front doors. Now, sometimes we had kids block open a door, but the security cameras would often pick up that situation and would take care of it. So first of all, then, outside integrity. And then, we regularly had drills, lockdown drills, intruder drills, give the kids some practice. This is what happens when there's a problem, when there's a safety issue. And look what happened here, this recent shooting in Freeman, Washington, just today. And it had a terrible outcome. One person is dead, three are wounded. But it may have been much worse. You know, they had a lockdown drill yesterday. It's just one of those things. And so kids knew what to do in the situation. It may have prevented more injuries.
Mr. Warner, do you have anything?
Yes, yeah, the most same points is the restricting access. I think that's one of the reasons they want to replace Beacon Hill Elementary, because these classrooms are all exposed to the outside. There is, every classroom is exposed to outdoors, pretty much. And that is a real safety issue. The only thing I would add is that, is rather a minor point, we're all thinking of safety as school shootings, because that's what scares us. And I would just add, I would like to put cameras on the playgrounds, like cameras at playgrounds at night. And that's rather a minor issue, because that concern is because of things that are left there overnight occasionally on some of the playgrounds. Condoms, needles, graffiti. And that's just, if we had cameras on the playgrounds, we could have a chance of figuring out who did it and that would be a deterrent. And I just think it's kind of an obvious, obvious thing to do, just try and fix that problem, put some cameras on outside and can kind of keep those playgrounds a little safer. But I'm interested in school students.
The next question goes directly to Mr. Warner. How do you keep students safe from bullying if this Kelso School District is doing enough?
Well, I don't know that any school district is really doing enough, partly because we don't always sure what to do. Everybody takes it seriously, but it's so hard. I think, I was able to see the talk, walk and squat program, which is developed here locally, which is, seems to me to be an effective method. They talk to me, the kids tell another kid to stop, so they take some responsibility for stopping it. Second, they walk away. They get away from the child, other child, remove themselves. And third, if that is the one thing, they go talk to somebody. That seems like an effective method in general for dealing with problems like that. We have to kind of change the mentality of everybody. As far as bullying, you know, they say there's three parts to bullying. There's the bully, the person who's doing bullying, there's the victim, and there's the bystanders. And we tend to focus on the bullies and tell them not to bully. We also need to teach kids to stand up for themselves as much as we can. That should start in preschool, kindergarten, telling kids, when they say so-and-so hit me, well, you need to, what did you say to them afterwards? Did you tell them to stop? You tell them they didn't like it? And that's what can be little to children. Because what did you say when they said that to you? To a, there's a certain extent, it almost requires consent for the person being bullied to be bullied. There's a certain amount of consent involved there, but especially by the bystanders who are saying, you know, this is, not saying anything, sending the message that this is okay. And so, like I said, no, I don't know that any school district is really doing enough on this. We can all do better. And I think that's sort of a framework to start with.
Mr. Sharple, do you have a question?
What'd he said? Yeah. First of all, the district needs to have a zero tolerance for bullying. And Kelso School District does. That's easy to say, it's hard to accomplish. You have to begin in the earliest grades and you teach kids to have empathy and concern for others. As the kids mature going through the grades, your programs for teaching empathy and concern, you know, become more sophisticated. Until, you know, by the time they're in high school, you can have some pretty serious and mature conversations with them about bullying and its consequences. I know there was a great fear over the program that came out, what, last year, Thirteen Reasons Why? A lot of people objected to its use in the classroom. Other people saw that there was real value in dramatizing what happens when bullying As Alan indicated, when bullying does occur, these people, these folks need to be counseled and not just the bully, but the victim too. And ultimately, you may reach a point where someone is resistant to counseling and insists on bullying, intimidating others, then we're going to have to find an alternative placement for them.
Okay, the next question goes to Mr. Sharple. This is an audience question. Do you support for the folks opening up union contract negotiations to the public while the white clock?
I was asked this question by the Daily News and I respond the way I responded to them. It puts me in a very awkward situation. Our board policy is that the board president speaks for the board. That's the policy. And if I say I support the policy, then it was very likely that the Daily News wouldn't want to give me their endorsement. On the other hand, if I say that I would like the policy to be open, then I'm undermining the people that I have to serve with, at least until November. So what I will say is, I will happily embrace whatever policy the board chooses to make.
Mr. Warner?
Well, yeah, I also spoke to the Daily News and asked that question. Another question they asked was whether I thought we should change the policy about letting board members speak their mind outside of, if they disagree with the policy. And I think that that should be changed. It's really unfortunate that Howard cannot answer that question. So I would say that, in general, it makes it difficult, and not being a member of the school board, I can say that, yeah, that makes, that, everyone has an interest in making sure that public funds are spent wisely and efficiently. Negotiations would be difficult to carry out in public. I'd like to see examples of that done successfully first. However, I am always in favor of greater transparency. And I think we should move towards more information for the public as much as we can, as much as is feasible. I'd like to see if some other school district has carried that out successfully.
I'm sorry, Sharon, I misunderstood your question. I've got my earrings in, but I still misunderstood. You were asking about negotiations and not public comments?
Yeah. Do you oppose or support opening up the union's contract negotiations to the public?
No, I would oppose open negotiations. Our superintendent had the experience in the district that he worked in before, where it was an open negotiation public. And he saw that people would play to the cameras, that they would, you know, dramatize something that didn't need to be dramatized. Negotiations are very messy and you have both sides taking initial positions that may seem unfair or draconian to people outside the industry or the business. And, you know, generally speaking, as negotiations progress, there are enough people willing to talk about what's going on that the public knows and has at least some idea of what's happening behind closed doors.
Okay. So let's go to the next question, which should start with Mr. Warner. Recently, the dress code at Kelso High School has become an issue. A petition has been started online to make changes to the current dress code. What's your position on this, what do you think about this?
Well, it's interesting, because I was thinking about my experiences in that issue myself as a student. I remember being in high school, and when I was in high school, the boys couldn't wear shorts and the girls couldn't wear skirts and the boys thought that wasn't fair. And so they held a protest by wearing skirts to school. And, yeah, and then I went to college. I actually went to a college that had a dress code. And a rather strict dress code, actually. And it was also a matter of controversy at the time. There were students pushing for changes and, again, one of the changes, one of the issues was men weren't allowed to wear shorts. And that was changed. It had some odd, it didn't, the changes weren't what the students wanted, but it was changed. I think dress codes in general are always going to be a matter of controversy. I think it's hard to keep them up to date with standards of the time. And because, because the standards change from day to day, year to year, styles change, I think they need to be a matter of regular, being updated regularly, although they're probably never going to be exactly what all the students want. But, yeah, updating them would be appropriate.
Okay, Mr. Sharple?
I agree with Mr. Warner. Dress codes very often are controversial and kids will all very often push the limits of the dress code. I know that teachers and administrators spend a great deal of time trying to determine what's going to be appropriate wear for schools. Certainly, they don't want to allow students to dress in such a way that the school is disrupted. At the same time, they will often make rules that the kids feel are unfair. And so, you know, dress codes evolve. It may be that this petition is successful and that the administrators listen and they may adjust their expectations. Or they may, you know, have very good arguments about why they're enforcing the rules the way they are. I think at some point, you have to trust the administrators and the teachers in the building. They're not trying to cheat the kids out of wearing their favorite clothes. They're just trying to maintain some kind of order.
Okay. The next question goes to Mr. Sharple. This comes from an online organization having this large family. This is something different. Every year, there's a significant challenge in pet life at Kelso. They have a solution, plus solutions to be closed.
You got me there. When our kids were in elementary school, at least on a couple of different occasions, we got the lice in the classroom and, you know, we had to go through the whole process of getting rid of the things. And so, I don't know what to tell you. You know, it seems to be one of those problems that just never goes away, not entirely.
Mr. Warner?
Yeah, that's, I think, what happened several years back is the state decided that lice was a nuisance, not a menace. And it stopped, it was no longer allowed as a excused absence, to be absent for lice. And that created, has, policy is not always popular, but it's a state policy. About all we, I don't, all we can do, I suppose, is notify people that there's lice in the classroom. There's only so much we can do after that. Education about what to do when you have lice. People, everyone talks about shampoos and those are losing effectiveness because of, the lice are becoming resistant. The best thing to do is actually comb, use a comb and put the clothes in the dryer or tie them up in bags and things like that, everything you can to kill the lice. You know, lice have been around as long as there've been people and they're not going to go away. No one wants them. It makes you, it keeps you just thinking about them. But if, with the state policy being what it is, there's only so much we can do.
Okay. Okay, next one goes to the school board, it starts with Mr. Warner. If you were a school board member, how would you convince voters to test whether they're gone? What would you, how would you help that happen?
That's a good question. I would, I always think it's best to get people involved in the beginning. I know the school district is, does work on that. They give, there's parents and community members on the school, on the facilities And you need to have, make sure your goals are matching the community's goals, especially regards to how much money they're willing to spend. I'm thinking of my hometown of Washougal, where this town grew after I graduated. And they've done building a new school, but first they tried to pass a levy to build in the school and it was rejected, so they finally ended up compromising on building on top of the existing structure in that past. There's, I personally believe that schools are important and that facilities are important and that some things are worth sacrificing for. I think we need to explain, we need to get people to buy into the education as an expense, that it is worth it. And even if it hurts, it's worth it. Some things are just worth doing, even when they're hard. And we also need to make sure that the community believes that we are using their funds appropriately. That is one of the big issues. It's not that people aren't willing to spend the money, but they want to make sure it's really being used efficiently and appropriately and isn't being wasted. And so there has to be an effort on that as well, to make sure, so that our goals, the community shares our goals. community shares our goals, and trying to explain the importance of education, and also make sure that we are being efficient with the dollars, with taxpayer dollars, and that we can prove that to taxpayers.
One of the things that Kelso District has done with this upcoming bond issue is that they started with a thought exchange, and they ran that for several days, weeks, I think. And they collected suggestions from community members about, you know, what would be your priority, you know, what are the things that you would like to see done? These are the questions to the community. And then, the facility improvement team took those suggestions and began to craft a plan of what could be done, what should be done in the district. Now that they've settled on an amount of money that we're going to ask for, and they've got a basic plan in place, they're now starting up the thought exchange again to re-involve the community and make sure that everybody's headed in the right direction. As Mr. Warner points out, you know, you have to, you have to convince the community that they're getting the best that we can give them for their dollars. It's important that we continue to support the education of our kids. Finally, on a personal level, I like bond issues in the past, and levies in the past, I'll be back out banging on doors and asking people to give us their support, so.
Okay, next question will start with Mr. Sherwood. What is your stance on distance education?
Online?
Distance education, online?
Online education. Online education, I think it may work well for some students, but for the great majority of students, I, you know, I think that they get a lot more from being in the classroom and exchanging ideas with other students. I've taken a few online classes myself, and while I was able to earn the credit that I needed to earn, I much preferred being in a classroom where a free exchange of ideas could take place. It was wonderful, as a teacher, to see kids engaged in conversations and discussions, you know, dealing with weighty subjects. And I'm not sure that that's as meaningful or as powerful when you're doing it online. But it does have its place.
Mr. Warner?
Yeah, that, yeah, in-class education has real advantages, and there are situations when it's easier for students, whereas online education may help students finish their degree. I've also taken some online classes, and I was thrilled by them. I wish I could, I wish I could have done all my college classes online, because it was so much more, so much better for me. And so, especially students who are struggling, students who are struggling in a school environment, students who may not be succeeding in a typical school environment, then, or students who are maybe ready to work at a faster pace, those are all places, students who might be well served by distance education. Of course, in-class education is, there are real advantages to that, and a human connection is very important, so we should, we wouldn't want to ever make them equal in accordance, I don't think.
Okay. So, this is the final question then. So, Mr. Warner, if anything were possible, describe your ideal school district.
Anything were possible? Ideal school district, so that we're talking about the schools in the school district, I assume. So, if anything were possible, kindergarten would be age-appropriate, and kids would be able to play and do things that are appropriate for their age, and have expectations of appropriate. We would be more concerned with the individual progress rather than average class score. We would focus on, be able to focus on things more than reading and math, we'd be able to focus on social studies and art. We'd have plenty of community support for funding, we'd be able to help the kids who have special needs, kids who have mental health issues, and kids who have other issues. We'd be able to, I think, get the parents to support their kids at home, and to support discipline policies, and to, we'd work with the parents on discipline policies and the kids' education, we would have parent input in policy, and we'd have teacher input, we would be able to move forward, or be able to help each individual child, be able to individualize education. And again, and then, once kids get too old enough, they'd be able to choose between college and getting ready to be employed. Those are just some things that I would, would be ideal, think would be ideal. Oh, we'd also be able to work with family literacy, family education, kids would be able, kids can do better if we helped work with their parents when they're short on their education, and can teach them English, or help them complete their degrees, or get education themselves.
Okay, Mr. Sherwood, what's your opinion?
The ideal or the perfect school district? Okay. You know, I suppose, the ideal school district is no kid comes to school hungry, no kid comes to school abused, every teacher is a master teacher, the community is always 100% behind the district, there's always enough money to take care of any problems that arise. That would be ideal. Unfortunately, you know, we deal in the real world, and it's, so many of our kids come to school hungry and abused, and we do the best we can to educate them and to help them. You know, I don't know a teacher worth his or her soul who isn't romantic at heart, we just feel like we can make a difference, and so we do all we can.
Okay. So now, we two people have two minutes to make a closing statement, and I ask Mr. Warner to go first.
Okay. Just say again that I am, you know, proud to have my kids, I'm glad my kids are able to go to Kelso Schools, I am pleased with what they've been able to receive. Many of the problems we faced as a district, as to me, the changes I would like to see in the district, and a lot of people would like to see, are, can't come just from us, they are, they would require state changes and even federal changes. We'd have to work with other districts and the people in other areas in order to make those happen. And I think that we could begin doing that, especially if we could have more success, if we could work within the policies that we have, and try to come up with some creative solutions. I also would like to see again that, as we have these policies, I'd like to be able to say, for us to go to the teachers, the parents committee, and say, these are our, these are the rules we have to follow. This is what we have to do, this is where we want to go. How do you think we can get to where we want to go under the rules we have to follow? Do you have any ideas we haven't thought of? And how can we make this work? And I think that's, in general, the way we need to move forward.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to everybody here tonight, and the community at large. When I was a teacher, I did not see myself as a school board member. You know, administration was the last thing I wanted, wanted to go into. At my heart and soul, at my core, I was a classroom teacher, and I loved what I did, and I couldn't imagine doing anything else. But now that I'm on the school board, it's grown on me a bit, you know? I've really come to enjoy serving the district in another, in another capacity. And so, I hope I continue, am able to continue to do that, and thanks very much.
Okay. So, in summary, I'd like to thank the candidates for making the effort to come here. I'd like to thank the commissioners for letting us use this space. Our next forum will be here in this, in this room, Thursday, September 28th, again at 7:00 PM. And this is for the Kelso City Council positions. Tuesday, October 10th, we will be in the, this will be Longview City Hall, it will be the Longview School Board candidate. And then, Monday, October 23rd, in Longview City Council chambers, it will be the Longview City Council candidate. And because we are a county organization, Widdoos is in the county too, and we will be holding a forum for Widdoos City Council candidates, Sunday, October 15th, at 2:00 PM, that's, that's on Sunday, we do it at 2:00 PM. And that's in the council chambers, which is also in the little police station. Okay, so, to, again, thank you, everybody.